Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for March 14th, 2024. You can stand with me, please, for the pledge. And the two, the two leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Proceeded. The first thing that we're going to do this evening is what we do at every meeting, and that is have opportunity for public comment questions to the village board from the audience. Following that, there will be a presentation by Matt Chatfield on the New York Forward Grant that the village has been awarded. And then, following that, before our regular board of business, will be a public hearing authorizing the certain improvements to the Village of Webster wastewater treatment plant for a total project cost of fifteen million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, we will open, first of all, the floor for any comments, questions to the old board. Brian Don, 623 Webster Road.
Hey, Mr. Denham. Just before you start, if you're going to comment about the public hearing, the topic of the public hearing, wait till the public hearing. Otherwise, you don't get to do it twice.
Okay.
You know, you don't think it's do it now and then at the public hearing.
Yeah, no problem, Mike.
Yes, it's really for topics other than...
I misunderstood what he was saying.
I know. It's really for topics other than the subject of the public hearing.
If there is then no one who would like to address the board on something other than what the topic is for the public hearing, then I will close the comment portion of this meeting. And we will move now to a presentation by Matt Chatfield on the New York Forward Project.
Thank you very much. Does this sound?
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it. I can project pretty good, though. Any chance you can get that up on the screen? Technology.
Only good at work.
That's okay. I'm going to get started.
Your name?
The board members each have a pronoun. Matt Chatfield, Executive Director of the Webster National Home Alliance. The alliance was the entity that wrote the grant application for the New York Forward Grant Program on behalf of the village. It was our second attempt, and this year we were successful. Today, I have a quick agenda of about five topic items. I want to give an overview of what the program really is, talk about the local planning committee, which is the body that will guide the process. We'll talk about the open call for projects, which is the solicitation for active projects to be awarded funds in the future. The strategic investment plan, which is the overall document that gets assembled and sent to the state. And then, of course, talking about public engagement and stakeholders.
Do you want to share?
Oh, we already awarded it.
Sure.
And I know, because that's sure.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we're going to get right in. So, the New York Forward Program is a... Essentially, it is a downtown revitalization program. And we have established a downtown boundary that is coterminous with the Business Improvement District here in the village. So, the boundaries of the bid, which is our business area, are the same boundaries for this district. So, all properties within the bid essentially would be eligible to apply. That includes public and private properties. Essentially, what has been awarded to us is there's not a... Although, there was a big paper check that was kind of delivered, right? And we had photos in front of it. There will not be a deposit of four point five million dollars sitting in a bank account for the village at any point in time. What has happened is the state of New York has said, "We're going to set aside four and a half million dollars towards revitalization projects," and they're reserved for the... Within the Village of Webster, right? So, some of those projects may be public sector projects, like a park improvement project or street state improvements. Some of them may be private sector projects, right? So, the goal of the next... The next steps of the process is to identify exactly what those projects are. I can... The presentation itself goes over the goals of the New York Forward Program. So, it's village revitalization. It's downtown investment, improvements of the housing stock, improvements of the public spaces that we have come to enjoy, also improvement of the building stock. But not necessarily buildings that have been, for lack of a better term, almost intentionally disinvested in. This is not a upkeep management program. This is not a, "I need a new roof," or, you know, "I'd really love to replace those windows that are broken." Those are investments that any property owner is expected to make, right, into their property. So, these are for more holistic investments into the village center that will improve the vitality and function of our village center as a place for people to come, gather, and spend their time, shop, and then, of course, to congregate for events. And, of course, this could also help, you know, improve the tax base. So, we won four and a half billion dollars. We won. So, what does that mean? Well, that means the first step in the process is we have to develop a final document. We submitted an application that had a host of our vision and our goals and some, you know, clear objectives of what we would accomplish with these funds, and then a host of example projects, right, hopeful projects. That document is the starting point. That document will be refined, and the local planning committee is a group of citizens that will help refine that document. So, it is not a group of elected officials. There's a core group of elected officials that are part of like a backend organization, or I would say just a committee, right, that will help keep the process flowing and make sure that all the logistics work. But the local project committee will be made up of local residents, business leaders, some property owners. But the goal is to have a broad diversity of participation on that committee. So, the mayor and myself have assembled a list of hopeful names to be invited. And that list actually had to get sent to the state for vetting and an okay. Once the state has given us the okay, then those individuals will actually be reached out to with a formal invitation to participate on the committee. None of those invitations have gone out, and none of those individuals know who they are because we haven't told anybody yet, because we needed to make sure that there was a coherent agreement between the village and the state on what was basically the composition of that list, right? So, that committee will get formed, hopefully in April, and have its first meeting. And then, that committee will drive the planning process, and it will be guided by state-awarded consultants. So, separate money, not part of the four point five million. The state has hired consultants that's going to assist the village in finalizing this process, this identification of the plan, and of course, going through and identifying all the projects and, you know, the hopeful investments. Entire process will take six to seven months, starting in April, hopefully ending in October or November. And at that point, a list of projects will get sent to the state, and then the state will select the projects that it chooses to fund. I want to use the analogy of, think of it like a wedding registry. Everything that we put on the list is something that we really want to see happen. But in the end, you don't have... The village will not have 100% control over which of the projects ultimately are selected by several state organizations, several state agencies, because the project will be run through multiple different agencies. The goal right now is to put together the best and most coherent list of projects and investments that we can, both on the public sector side and on the private sector side. That process will be led by the local planning committee. It will be guided by the consultants, and that will take place over six months. In the next 30 to 45 days, a call for projects will go out. And that call for projects will be probably five, seven pages long. That is a proposal, you know, it's basically a request for proposals for folks. And then, from there, those proposals are understood, they're reviewed, they're scored, sort of ranked. And then, as we move to the next phase, right, the, I would say, the viability of the projects are determined, right, the cost analysis of those projects are determined, and whether or not they actually can be funded, whether or not they're realistic proposals. And then, they'll just kind of be refined and refined until we get a core list of projects that we think we can work with. The village itself will also be submitting proposals for its public sector projects. In the past, in other years, the municipality was given deference to basically not have to submit a proposal. This year, parity is what the state wants to at least see. So, everybody has to submit a proposal that vets out the projects so that at least puts a little bit of onus on the municipality to ensure that it's doing its homework and putting forth a project that's been well thought out, right, and has broad support from the village board and, you know, from the public. So, that's really the next steps. The public... The public involvement and public engagement process is going to be multifaceted. We have that local planning committee. That's going to be a committee of our peers and citizens within the community. We're going to drive that process. There's going to be multiple public workshops. There'll be one in the beginning of the process in April, probably, maybe May. Most likely, May. By the time... By the way, things are shaking out. Looking like that will happen in May. That's going to talk about that, a open call for projects. Describe it to the public. The next public workshop opportunity will be when that final list, or at least the semi-final list of projects, has been established to get concurrence from the public. In between, during the summertime, there will be lots of public engagement opportunities that will happen at specific events. Like, we're going to, most likely, the consultant team will be having stakeholder meetings with either specific groups, such as, let's say, the Business Improvement District, or perhaps Chamber of Commerce, or maybe the museum, or, you know, any other of these organizations will have specific stakeholder meetings. But we'll also be holding events that are out in the public at other events. Maybe the Jazz Festival, maybe, you know, a Friday Beer Garden Evening, something. We're going to where the people are and getting their feet. That is the broad summary. I think we did have one question. Don actually brought up a good question regarding the matching funds required. So, each of these projects is going to be scored essentially independently. I would say that the public sector projects will have the least matching funds required, right? The state would most likely encourage some form of local investment, both to spread the money out as best as possible, to show that there's some commitment behind it, that there's some skin in the game, so to say. And for, like, let's say, in the village, at the village center, where do we have the Veterans Park? You do have a Parks Trust Fund that could potentially be tapped towards that. Or, we can start working together and figuring out, well, maybe the village does need the budget, setting aside some funds between now and, let's say, the next three, two to three budget cycles so it can take on a project, a small component, maybe a 10% component of a project, right? The private sector will have more robust matching funds requirements. It will vary, anywhere from probably 30% to 50%. So, and I will say that none of these funds, on the private sector side, are equity investments. None of them will be a check written upfront. They will all be reimbursements. The village, because the funds will be run through one particular program, the village will be fortunate enough, they will get basically reimbursed during the life of the project, right? The project will happen, or a phase of that project will happen, invoices will come in, they'll get remitted, and then they'll get reimbursed. It would be very temporary forms of financing just to actually construct the project. But the monies would come in, would come back within any days typically, as long as we can process the invoices best. On the private sector side, those funds will all be expended upfront, and then, an accurate accounting and audit of the project will take place. And then, a reimbursement would be directed to the property owner, not through the village. It would be direct to the property owner. A lot of information. For me, it's been like drinking from a fire hose for like 20 days now. Any...
Any...
Any... Any questions at this point? Anything that needs clarification? Don, did I answer any of your questions?
So, basically, what's next?
What's next? Finalization of the local planning committee. That committee will be formed. It will hold its first meeting in, hopefully, by the end of April. And then, the very next thing from the public side would be a public information workshop that hopefully will take place here in the next, I would say, four to six weeks.
And is it you and the mayor that's deciding who's going to be on the local planning committee?
The mayor and myself have assembled a list of names, and we have sent them to the state for approval.
Oh, so it's the state that approves?
The state has a...
Well, first, you got to get the people to say, "Yes, I want to do it."
No.
No?
No.
This is silly.
It seems... It seems counterintuitive. I would agree. The state implored us to not reach out to people for fear that if a name was vet, was brought up now, and then the list changed because of the composition of the size, if we reached out to 20 people, but at the end, they only wanted 12 names, and we had to take some names off the list, that feelings would be hurt, and it would start everything on a sour note. That was the directive we were given. We're playing by the rules, considering that we've been blessed with an opportunity to spend four and a half billion dollars. We're just going to play by the rulebook.
Although, the risk is you could have the opposite effect. They could say, "Sure, if these 12 are approved, you go to the 12, and you only get 10 of them that say yes. Now, you're too short." And then what happens?
I would say that they requested a list of eight names, and we provided 15.
So, you're hopeful that you'll get at least eight out of them?
Yes, sir. Does that make sense? Right? It's not how I would do it.
Appreciate your hard work on this project.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we appreciate you.
Anything else? Mr. Zleda?
Nothing.
No?
There will be more questions.
I'm just curious if I'm one of the 15 names.
Me, too.
You don't need to answer that.
I will say that the 15 names that were submitted, none of them were elected officials because we were asked that no elected officials be on that list because the elected officials will have a separate role. So, these are organizations and entities, institutions within the community that champion various efforts. You know, basically, this broad and diverse spectrum of the community that we could have, including some business owners and property owners, but also some nonprofits and some local organizations that we all know well. Hopefully, we can get a good diverse list of ideas and brains behind us. True community.
All right. Any other questions?
Without any other questions, I leave you to your public meeting, public hearing. Oh, I may add that these are village revitalization funds. Since this is not a blank check, this is for downtown revitalization. So, none of these funds could be funneled into a sewer department, for example. These are... That would not be ineligible. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Why, I...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just wondering if we... If a project is selected, what would happen and cost overruns?
So, if... The way it's going to work is a project will be submitted for consideration by the state. It will have a very detailed budget assigned to it, and the sources and uses of those funds. So, we're going to borrow X from a bank. We're going to have X in equity cash of our own, and then we're going to ask for Y from, you know, basically from the state, from the New York Forward. In the end, the number that gets assigned to them from the New York Forward Funds, that stays constant. Right? So, even if we're a public sector project, so if the public sector... Like, it's no different than any other grants, right? We only... There's no changing the grant amount, you know, post-award. Those funds are assigned and they're encumbered down to the penny, and the project will get massaged and pushed and pulled, and so it comes in on budget. Or more cash from another source will come in. That's a good question.
Thank you, man. Okay. At this time, we will now open the floor. This is for the public hearing, authorizing the improvements, certain improvements to the village wastewater treatment plant for a total cost, project cost, which has risen from ten, nine, and ten-four to fifteen, nine, fifteen million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, at this time, anybody who would like to address the board, and do so, state your name and address. And we're going to be limited to three minutes of time. And in three minutes, we will let you know, and time is up. Brian Don, 623 Webster Road.
So, price is increasing. How is that going to affect per household, you know, amount month, I mean, a year?
I believe, right now, it's projected at sixty-nine dollars increase. From forty, approximately forty-eight.
So, I got some freedom of information from the village. And it says, like, today, it's like two hundred and twenty-five dollars per household average a year for 2024, right? And then, it's going to go... It's going to go up a little bit. This is at the ten million or twelve million dollars. Now, it's going to be sixteen, right? So, it's the threshold from... The whole reason why you guys didn't want to join the town is because you say you can save your residents more money, right? But now that the price is going up, like, the town, when it finishes its project, per household, we're going to be paying three oh one. You guys are going to be maybe more than that now. Because that... Because that, at the twelve million or ten million it was in 2029, you were going to be at three hundred, which is just one dollar off of what we were. But that was at the lower price. Am I right? Am I saying that?
There were projections.
Right.
Correct. However, those projections were for the village. I have no idea if...
No, but I got the town freedom of... I got the projections. And for the town, like, in 2026, it's going to be three oh one. And if the... I got the information right here. But if the... And if the village's joint, it's also going to be three oh one for them. And if your projection's at the twelve million, in 2026, it's going to be three hundred. That was at the lower price. Your price has got to be higher now. So, to me, it means that...
The mayor just told you, it's going to go up sixty-nine dollars per EDU. The village is currently two twenty-five, two twenty-five plus sixty-nine is two ninety-four, which is less than three oh one.
So, it's less than three oh one, but is that worth not combining with... Can I give this information to the board right here?
And then, I do that for three minutes, so pardon my stuff.
You look at that. This is what our neighborhood has been going for years. So, that's the town, right?
So, this is my neighbor. This right here, this plant is in the village. This is the facility population size. Your neighborhood, what about?
Third, we need to stop, and we need to move on. So, pass those out if you would wish.
Get your gloves back here.
Thank you.
I know. I'm... Thank you. So, there's... Thank you.
Was that three minutes?
Yes.
That was three minutes.
The next person.
Can I say anything else?
No.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Havensmith. I live at 1233 Wall Road. Been there for 38 years. And I think one of the problems is that we have... We have a communication problem. And we've, as you guys know well, we've, you know, when this plant was placed where it is, it was placed in a town residential neighborhood. We... We don't hear... We don't hear what's going on. We hear that the village is going to continue... Is it mic down?
It should be.
We don't hear that what is going on with new buildings, improvements, et cetera. You guys, I think in the village, need to take a good, hard look at what you're paying for and sort of last ditch, say, "Is this really the route we want to go?" Even if the costs are close, you're going to go down this road where we have a duplication of services, a state-of-the-art plant for 45,000 residents at the lake at Phillips Village, and an older plant, which, you know, I'm sure you guys are doing the best you can, but we still live with this in a fairly tight plot of land in a very residential neighborhood. Brian's on one side, I'm on another, and, you know, we would really like for you to explore this further. It seems ridiculous to continue this duplication of services when things could be better for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Adams, 1222 Perry Drive, Webster. I don't fully understand as to why you guys are not deciding to build the plant and utilize the town's facilities. Free life?
Freelife, the big project that's going on out towards Ontario, the Webster area, is building a, a very large water treatment plant as well. It's my understanding that the town has an agreement to be able to deliver product to there so that they can use their treatment plant as well. So now we're gonna have three?
No.
Three facilities in Webster? It sounds a bit ridiculous. I really think that you guys should think about it, considering, utilizing the town, the town's facilities. And I do think that, that that facility there, and your guys' facility there, does have spillover that goes into the Bell Creek. I back up to that, you say not, you guys don't capture water the way you should. The plant's very old, you don't have a, there's no trench around your entire facility, capturing your own water and spill out. High, high amounts of rain, the, uh, the creek backs up, contamination curves, it does happen. So.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, ten seventy-five Railway Crossing. I know a few years ago, the town and the village had detailed conversations about a joint sewer plant for the town and the village. Those discussions took maybe a year, a year and a half. And I think the village made the right choice in forming, continuing to have their own sewer plant. I'll ever give you the reasons why here. When I left office in two thousand nineteen, the sewer rate was, for the town of Webster outside the village, a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and some change. And I had done phase one of the addition to the sewer plant at about sixteen million, and it was bonded. Since that time, town of Webster's taken out, has appropriated eighty-one point eight million, eighty-one point five million to do upgrades. It has recently took another seven million point five. That adds to eighty-eight million. Of the eighty-one million, only thirty-five million so far has been bonded. The rest of it is on anticipation notes. But this year, my sewer rate was two hundred and ninety-six dollars and some change. So if the gentleman thinks that in two thousand and twenty-six, he's gonna be at three hundred and one dollars, I gotta bridge on some, because that's not gonna happen. Supervisor right now does not have any, not one agreement with Freelife for anything in the way of paybacks or anything. They have bonded eighty-eight million dollars without one agreement with Freelife Coke to get one dime back from them at this point in time. And I am very concerned that they're gonna take out a thirty-year bond, and then maybe Mr. Coke will pay for ten years, and we, the taxpayers, are gonna get stuck for the interest for the other twenty years. So I'm just here to tell you that you made the right decision, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
I'm Lori Reynolds, one thirty-eight Judson Street, on the village. I'm representing Webster City Sunday Action Late tonight, I'm the chair. I just wanted to read a little something here. Some village residents received an allowance flyer this past weekend illegally placed in their mailboxes if they scared tactic. The people most likely found knowingly purchased property in the vicinity of the sewer treatment plant, the village sewer treatment plant, and are now exaggerating the cost for the village residents for upgrades so much that they feel that the town and the village sewer treatments should be combined. This is a very bad idea. In three years, the town rebuilding its own old treatment plant has gone from sixty million to a hundred and twenty million dollars. Why should village taxpayers pay for millions in debt for broken-down town sewer pump stations that village residents will never use? Village residents will pay less. Upgrading the village treatment plant upgrades will make it state-of-the-art, environmentally friendly, and cost-effective. The village wastewater treatment plant is not a redundant service since they don't serve the same people. Having our own treatment plant is the most cost-effective way to bring local wastewater treatment to the village. Thank you.
I look at it this way. If it cost me less than a dollar a day to use the sewer, it's fine with me to spend more than that in coffee. So, to me, to be able to flush the toilet and have it go away is worth a dollar or more to me. That's the way I look at it. It could increase to three fifty, and it still wouldn't be a dollar a day.
Anyone else? And then if not, I will throw the public hearing portion of the meeting. We will move now to regular. Number one on our agenda this evening is a resolution to approve minutes from the February Public Perspective Board meeting. To have them in front of you. I would ask for a motion to approve.
No, I don't. I'll sign it.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a motion to approve the claims and warrants, those you have in front of you as well. I had the opportunity to put them over yesterday, and it seemed to have ordered me. Looking them over, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding that? If not, then we'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I had a question, I'll just address it, the rising bill was quite high, over eight hundred dollars. Normally it's not that high, she was just explaining it.
There was a mistake by, someone accidentally turned on the hotspot. They have offered to pay for it, but since we had, it happened one other time, we didn't ask that person to do it, but going forward, we'll be asking for a, a change to our employee handbook that we discussed that, but.
Did you call in T N T sometimes, just have a conversation?
I did, and I'm waiting for a response from, from, and we are looking to change the plan, and there might be a D P W discount we might be able to get going forward. But we only share ten gigs between all lines, and so it was just a mistake. The employee offered to pay for it, and moving forward, we're working on turning off the hotspots.
It was very much the first time that happened, I didn't even know what hotspot was, and somehow it was on on my phone. So I think, go ahead and pray to help us on, on calling the.
All right, so you let your answers, you were gonna let your.
I asked him.
That was a terrible motion, I'll make a motion.
I'll sign it.
Okay. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have resolution to approve wastewater treatment plant project at a total cost of fifteen million, excuse me, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a resolution of the village of Webster, Board of Trustees, to authorize the certain improvements to the village wastewater treatment plant for that total cost not to exceed fifteen million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Before the board considers that resolution, and since we brought Matt Higgins here, would you care to hear why, what the increase in the cost was all about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would've been nice, that would've been nice, if the rule was full, maybe explain that.
I would've liked that, yes, when everybody was still in here.
Well.
But, yes, we would.
Sure, sure. You only got three minutes, and there was watching.
I'll breathe.
No, I'm just kidding.
That is in your packet, is what he sent me, the cost summary that's in there, as well as the minutes from our last meeting, in your packet.
Yes, thank you for inviting me. My, my name is Matt Higgins, I'm a civil engineer working out of the Rochester office of Lobella. Few years back, the village enlisted Lobella to provide professional services for the project, and I'm, I'm Lobella's project manager, guiding the project forward in cooperation with the village. So I've worked closely with, with Mayor and Jake and Don and Heather throughout. So, I give some context. I have the, well, I came into this project about a week after the board's decision to improve the village wastewater treatment plant due to some reshuffling of votes at, at the office.
And we're so lucky to have you.
So, and, you know, I was thrilled to get involved, but to give you background about where that ten point nine million dollar number came from and, and where things are today, as we sit here and look at that summary. The original cost estimate for that ten point nine million was, was put together in July twenty twenty-one. And so it, it was heavily based on the conceptual project scope at the time in broad strokes, as well as the midpoint of construction in mid-two thousand twenty-three, and a four and a half percent inflation annually from two thousand twenty-one to that midpoint in construction, which would be mid-two thousand twenty-three. So those are the two biggest factors why we're, why we're looking at that. So instead of the four and a half percent inflation per year, it's been, between July two thousand twenty-one and now, it's been fourteen percent. So on ten point nine million, that's over one and a half million dollars extra. And then based on the construction period being, you know, obviously the midpoint, it has not begun yet, so the midpoint wasn't mid-two thousand twenty-three, the midpoint's probably middle of next year, spring of, this time next year, spring of next year. So we're looking at two additional years of, of inflation impacts there due to that schedule change. So we're, we're essentially doubling that impact. So when we look at, you know, fifteen point nine versus ten point nine, a five million dollar change, about three of it, or a little bit over three, is purely related to inflation and schedule. Other changes we could point to are very based on regulatory requirements. I won't bore you with minutia of, you know, wastewater treatment plant design, but the conceptual project scope at the time of, of that estimate was put together in the original bond resolution envisioned maintaining the existing hundred fifty-foot diameter trickling filter treatment tank and building a sixty footer right next to it. And so, given further engagement during detailed design with D C, what they were requiring was true redundancy, meaning that they wanted two of those tanks, both online, all the time. So that if something happens with one, you've got the other one already, you know, the bugs are alive, they're, they're eating the bacteria and the viruses in the wastewater, and, you know, the operators can switch right over to send all flow to that, and you're truly not in an emergency scenario. So when it came time to finalize this, this design, instead of the hundred twenty, instead of keeping the existing hundred fifty footer and building a sixty footer next to it, and trying to manage the challenge of balancing those significantly different sized tanks and keeping them both online, both well-fed all the time, the decision was made to remove the existing hundred fifty footer and build two tanks of the same size. And they're both, I believe the final dimension is forty-four foot diameter. So it provides true redundancy, it makes operation of facility much simpler, it pro, it provides reliability, it provides good health for the back, for the, for the bugs that are eating the bacteria, and it satisfies the regulatory requirement. But due to that change, it added project cost. So in terms of where does that additional two million dollars come from, where, you know, let's say three of the five is inflation and schedule, the big factor in there is, is really digging into the details of that final trickling filter design. We, you know, looking at it from, from our point of view, where we're, we're managing and designing and advancing these projects fairly routinely with, with communities of this size and facilities of this size, you know, we never like when a number increases, like we're, like we're sitting here talking about today. We do however feel good about the competitive bidding process that the village undertook and recently completed. I mean, we saw very high attendance at the pre-imped meeting with contractors, and the village received multiple bids for each of the five construction contracts. It was three general construction bids, two electrical, four mechanical, and two plumbing. So a really good indicator of, you know, is this bid price outrageous, or is it in line with where the industry is right now, is how it compares to other contractors who maybe aren't the lowest responsive bidder, but they also submitted a bid. So the bids were in line with what we thought, you know, roughly. So the bids were in line with what we thought, you know, roughly it would be before bidding. And then the contractors themselves for those construction contracts were relatively aligned with each other.
Yeah, I think that's important. These aren't engineered estimates anymore.
Yeah.
That fifteen point nine million, that's the bid price.
Yeah.
So you can be pretty confident that...
Yeah.
Yes. That's whatever.
So these are bid numbers with a one point three three million dollar contingency built into that number. So that's a ten percent contingency on the construction costs or unforeseen things that may come up during construction. So, you know, things always come up. When you start digging into the ground, things always happen, things always come up. But that's built into that fifteen point nine three two. Do you have any questions?
I'll make that first line, Matt.
Thank you.
Also built into that number is around ninety thousand to move the town's sampling point, which wasn't part of the original ten point nine. The sampling point where it is now is basically where the flows have combined. And since they have to be separated, the town's gotta move theirs only because of the village having to have a separate speedies permit. So the village agreed to pay for it. And they've already, they've already bid all there, so that's a hard number, too.
I think we've tried to do the right things for our residents.
Speedies permit was obtained March first. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Those four minutes.
Sorry.
Part of it was him. Part of it was you.
That's true.
Oddly enough, they both know by the minute.
So the resolution is before the board. And I would ask, if there are more questions, then I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Yeah.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
I'm watching you guys down there. We have kids on board.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yay. Yay.
Hopefully, one day, we'll be underway. And now you have to do the bond resolution.
Yes.
The amended bond resolution. Okay. Next, we have a resolution to consider the amended bond resolution. Amended and restated bond resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York, known as the Village amending and restating in its entirety a bond resolution of the village dated October tenth, two thousand nineteen, and further amended and as restated on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, relating to improvements to be undertaken to the village's wastewater treatment plant estimating that the total cost thereof is fifteen million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of up to fifteen million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars in serial bonds of the village to finance said appropriation. Now, included in this five or six-page resolution is the one point four million E A grant. The village has to basically borrow the fifteen point nine, but of that fifteen point nine, one point four million is gonna get paid back by the grant. It's just the way New York State works. Also, this, the resolution, should it be approved or passed, is subject to a permissive referendum by village electors. And that is twenty percent of the registered voters. Here, I'm looking at Peter because...
It is.
Of the registered voters in the village as of the last general village election. And they've got, there's a thirty-day period to submit a petition seeking with the requisite twenty percent of the signatures, asking for a permissive referendum. That's all. Also, as part of this, it would be noted that as a result of the expansion of the improvements to be undertaken, which was included in the original project, the board by resolution adopted on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, determined that the twenty twenty-one project constitutes a type-two action under the state Environmental Quality Review Act, and that no further action is required of the board under seeker in connection with the twenty twenty-one project. Although, if you go to the top of page two, since this is actually the third bond resolution that the village is taking for this project, and the one in twenty twenty-one, because of, principally because of the second trickle filter, the square footage of the construction project exceeded, it no longer made it a type-two action. And instead, it was, it was an unlisted action. But at the time, back in twenty twenty-one, if you recall, a long-form E A F form was prepared and reviewed by this board. And it came to the conclusion that there was no significant environmental impacts because of the project. So a negative declaration was issued. That's how we cited. Since that was done back in twenty twenty-one, and today, the project is essentially the same, there's no need to do another seeker resolution. Again, I think it's important to note that one with the one point four million that we were granted, and the fact that the entire amount is interest-free at this point, is pretty significant. Yeah. Unlike the town's eighty-one million dollar bond. Carries interest. Principally, the village can thank Philip Village for that. Because literally, because it takes the average income of the village below the certain level, or the state gives us special things.
Thank you, Philip Village.
That's true.
It is true.
It is true.
One of the reasons why the town wants to... So, this resolution to consider the amended bond resolution before the board. A motion to approve. I'll make that resolution.
I'll second these guys are just gonna sit there.
You haven't even approved it.
Shots fired, Jerry.
He said shots fired a little round that end. Trustee Lauer?
I didn't even know they were gonna wake up. I thought they were, I thought they were sleeping.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
I do.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye. Because Judy is... Aye. General vote, aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And last, we have a resolution to authorize Superintendent of Public Works to sign a supplemental agreement with Napoli Skolnick Law Firm dated February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. You have that in front of you. We leave it back to the agreement that we had with them regarding any monies that they were able to recoup in negotiating settlements with various companies. And in terms of the settlement with Three M and DuPont, there were settlements that were reached. I do believe that in terms of these, what they are looking at is that DuPont agreement was recently approved and involves a lump sum payment of funds to the Nationwide Classic Water Provider. The Three M settlement, which is currently pending formal approval, involves a structured payment with Three M contributing funds over a ten-year period. And what they are looking for simply is that they would be paid upfront in the initial payments, and that their cost then would be covered. And any remaining payments over that period of ten years would go to the village.
Yeah, just to get, so knowing is our hopes of this. So far, we learned about this class action lawsuit and the ability to join it through NIWA, this local Texas New York Water Environment Association. So far, they've been dealing, this has been dealing with the water suppliers, not wastewater plants, but wastewater plants is another aspect of this. So this is basically, this particular change is because of the structured settlement that wasn't originally contemplated in the original agreement. That's what this change is for. But the wastewater, we haven't hit the wastewater harder yet, but we're still, you know, keeping our foot at the door. There's no initial outlay of cash or anything to the village based on what they would recover. Even with our new speedies permitting things, all plants, I believe, and I'm glad Matt's still here, but I believe all plants are probably gonna have to start testing for PFAS, PFAS, PFAS. I guess depending on where you're from. PFAS, PFAS, and one four-dioxide and other chemicals. Things, they typically will call them forever chemicals. You know, there's like firefoaming foam and things like that that we're in that will continue to circulate around if there's ever a time when, you know, we have to test for it. So it has to be a cost associated with it. And if there is a settlement, I believe we'll be able to, you know, at least recover those testing costs. And if there's any mitigating processes that we have to put in place at the plant or anywhere to take care of some of these chemicals that are just environmental, it's not specific to our plant. I don't wanna put that thought in anybody's head. But just specific to the environment that are out there, we would be able to, you know, recruit those costs as well, or a portion. And I'm assuming everybody's in the same boat. They probably don't have unlimited money. So whatever portion we can get, it's gonna, you know, take that burden off our taxpayers. Did I say everything right now?
You did.
So I guess next time, I...
So in light of that explanation, I would ask for a motion to authorize the Superintendent of Public Works to sign it.
Obviously, Don.
Yes, I would, and it is fact. Don did look at it?
Yes.
And it is, it is fact.
Let me make a motion. Hello? I'll second it.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
I'll say, great thing.
All right, one second. At this particular time, I would move to ask our attorney, if, if you have anything further for us. I do not. Sweet. Followed by Department of Public Works.
Speaking of short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
I had coffee. Few things, I think you have before you, and it came in a bit late. But Greenbrier Crossing is starting phase three. They provided an estimate for the letter of credit, which has been reviewed and found to be accurate in terms of quantity and and cost, you know, compared to cost to what they had for phases one and two. And obviously, they were inflecting a increase. I didn't do the percentages, but some of them were pretty stout, as Matt was explaining. So it's affecting everybody. So then they provided the draft letter of credit and went on and talked about the form, I guess.
Yeah, that's from Five Star Bank. It's the same form of the letter of credit that Five Star Bank is providing for the first two phases of this document.
So we would look, if the board wants to now or at the next meeting. I'm just interested, I was trying to make sure that they're moving along pretty well there. And I do not wanna be the speed bump. So everything was reviewed. Just wanted to see if we get authorization to approve or accept the letter of credit. I think the term Don had last time was form sufficiency in manner of execution.
That's actually what says in code.
Oh. I thought he came up with that. And then I was impressed for a minute. But, so if the board would like to consider that, or be marvelous.
And I appreciate the breakdown.
Yeah.
Besides all of the individual listings there on the last page to summary for each of the sections that they had water being sent to, so they've done quite a bit. I would ask for a motion to approve.
Can't approve if it's not on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
It's a protest.
I'll second it.
How is it?
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then, next thing, thank you, and I'll get that over to them. Next thing, real quick, it's advocacy day. As you know, last week, I went to Albany for Tuesday mid-morning or whatever. And we went to Albany, and then Wednesday, we had advocacy day for local roads. That's the banner, the theme is local roads are essential. There's about eight hundred or so superintendent, highway superintendents that have from all over the state, all in our orange shirts, going up to meeting with the representatives in the Assembly and the Senate. The governor, the way, from the air, the state budget process, the governor puts out the executive budget in January. And then the one-house budgets, the Senate, the Assembly both offer their budgets around this time of year. And the second week of March or so, and then this budget deadline is April first. There was a hundred and ninety dollars in cuts to some of the highway in the executive budget, some of the highway funds through CHIPS, which is something we use for, you know, equipment for funding the highway. Part of the effort is to explain that eighty-seven, I think it's eighty-seven percent of the roads are local roads. They're under local control. And so when you look at all the taxes that are captured, gas taxes and things that go towards roads, there's not a great sharing of it always. When the one-house budgets came out, the Senate re, put the, restored in their budget, restored the funding to this year's level, which is across the states, five hundred ninety-eight million. And I think the Assembly, I might have them backwards. One of them restored it to what it was, and one of them raised it a hundred million dollars, which was the ask. Part of the ask for a larger increase is, as Matt was talking about some of the increases, in the last thirty months, they said prices were the construction amount of fifty-eight percent. So, you know, if we had a hundred thousand dollars here in the village, gonna figure it... a fifty-eight percent increase.
Yeah.
If everything stays the same, then a hundred thousand dollars could buy, what, forty thousand or forty-two or whatever bought just a few years ago, or two and a half years ago, and, you know, and then with an additional cut, you're really cutting what we're able to do. So, this Western New York Superintendent Association pays for the hotel and everything, travel there, so I guess we pay for gas, but I think it's a worthwhile effort, and it's certainly something good that they do, and so if you have a chance to talk to any representatives, you know, certainly, I guess, thank them for putting money back in and explaining how important those ones are to the local, local community. So, it's a good thing, good thing to be a part of. It's about third or fourth, and I've got to go up there and do it, and it's, it's really, it's, it's a unique place and unique process, and I actually got to sit in the Assembly for about ten minutes, and I got frustrated and left because they were, it's, it's fun stuff.
We know that.
Last, there are two things, two more things. Highway school. I didn't make it in time for this meeting, so next meeting, when I request, when I send Jim Scott, our foreman, to highway school in Ithaca, it's put on by the Association of Townes every year, usually the foreman goes ahead and I'll go to NICO, so we split things up and get different information. It's in June. I might, just as a cost-saving measure, try to reserve the hotel now with anticipation of an approval, because we can cancel it, but the hotels range from down in Ithaca from, pick the one that was suggested, it's about a hundred and eight bucks, the other ones are two seventy, or, there's a big range, so if we can get locked into the hundred and eight one, we'll take that chance, and even, I think it's like eight or ten dollars more per night for three nights to lock it in now. So, we might do that, and then ask officially if we can sign them up for the highway school, and he can travel at the next meeting, but just want to see if we can get that out next time. And then, finally, one of the things we've been talking about for a long time is the cell tower, and we keep getting inundated with calls about, we want to buy your cell tower, here's this, here's that, and we talked about, you know, sorting through everything, all the different offers, trying to wham out, what's best is the best, keep our own is the best. Everybody, they always yell about the sky's falling, you know, all these companies are going to go settle, like, cancel all the sell leases, so you better sell it to us now, and I'm thinking, that argument makes them tell me the worst business people in the world, you know, everything's going to go to heck in a handbasket, what we want to buy it before it falls off the cliff, doesn't make sense. So, with all those things, one of the things we discussed was trying to do an RFP. It was probably a year or more ago, I reached out to the person that did our cell tower. Originally, he works in the cell industry, and we're trying to come up with RFP things. I don't, I don't even recall it. He didn't do it, so I don't believe he was interested. But I've been keeping my eye open, picking at it, and I've got some recent calls about it again. I did search looking for RFPs for the sale of a cell tower, and lo and behold, found Henrietta just about a month or so ago, did an RFP and sold their cell tower that was near their DPW. Looking at Google Maps, it had two Antonon versus the three that we had. So, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, I reached out to them, they sent over the information, I just got it, so I want to try to put that together, go over to Don, see if the board has an interest, then, you know, convert it to us. It's, you know, ninety pages of stuff, but convert that to what would work for us for your consideration, and if it's something you want to do, we can put an RFP out there. I think also, usually in there, it says you can refuse any and all of them, but let them compete with each other, know that everybody's competing, and see what comes out, because they've gotten increasingly higher, and they've gotten increasingly insistent, increasingly insistent on calling me all the time, making offers, and saying, just, I'll send it to the board, but I, I just tell them, I said, the board's not interested in back and forth, so give, give them your best one, and I'll present it to them, and then they say, what was this? I said, well, I know they refused one higher than that before, but I can send it to them. No, they did better. Well, then you invited me, and then give me your best one to start with. So, it's, it's like dealing with car dealers, not to put them all in one, probably, I mean, with a broad brush, but, so, anyway, so that might be coming up, if, if it's something that might be interested in me doing, we'll try to get that converted over, and I'll send it to Don, and see, and try to work on it to get something to present to the board to consider, and make this at least worth hearing everybody knowing they're competing against each other, what their real best is going to be.
Would that require then the three companies that are on the tower approving, or that would simply be us saying, the tower on which you have your equipment is going to be sold?
I'm not certain of that, but luckily, we have a very good attorney, from what I hear, and I'm sure he will review those leases. I think, I think the leases all say, you know, they've made an agreement with us, our successor assigns or whatever, the way they.
Yeah, I haven't looked at those leases in a long time, but I think they're assignable.
Well, thanks for looking into that. It's a good list.
Yeah.
And I wanted to thank you guys, too, for the stone on the island there on after hour, and you got plaques on it and everything, it looks great, thank you very much.
Really nice job, that was, we had a good cheerleader for that come in and tell us what he wanted done, so we, we looked at different ways to do it, but that was the best way to do it, and, you know, we apparently revolved one bam bam in there for a little while, making the wrap a little smaller, and it worked out good.
It was, yes, I went down, in fact, I went down and took some pictures, because I'm going to send it to the historic preservation.
It was good.
Yeah, so, we see it.
How are you to keep the plant?
Yep.
Well, you did, yeah, but the size of the, did you see the size of the stone?
They grow.
Well, of course, but if you.
They grow, they're strong, guys. I guess, Jake, when those come in, those RFPs, interested in you, at them, see where we are and what would they offer, how many years out that would be in terms of.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Well, before we even sent them out, I think the board had to authorize doing an RFP for them, and then set a date when they want to receive them. I, I've not, we haven't sold anything through an RFP, so I'm sure, since I've been around, I don't believe, so it'd be interesting to see, but we just get so many questions, and it seems, as I said, such a disjointed way to look at it, and probably not the best value, if you have just one person calling in a vacuum and telling you, you know, the market's about to go down terribly, and, like I said, it's, it's fallen off the cliff, so let me buy it quick before it does.
Yeah, really.
Doesn't make any sense, you know, so, but they all say they can do it because they diversify, so, I mean, I said, I still don't quite get what you're doing, and maybe that's why I tried the twenty fifteen games each round, and said, you know, we're.
By way of public notification, the serial bond interest and principal payment, or just interest, whichever applies, for bond obtained in two thousand and twelve, will be made in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I think that was, sure. Okay. The next meeting will be the village board meeting on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock here, and is there anything else that y'all would like to bring up? If not, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Don't say aye, you have to ask.